I call the meeting of North Syracuse Board of Education to order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which stands. My nation, under God, indivisible, with their tea and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to begin with a moment of silence for the following. David Thomas, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Kurt Paulson, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Raymond Marshall, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. John Cottage, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Dolores Bonai, a retiree to North Syracuse Central School District, when she was here, she was known as Dory Kushner, and that's how people knew her. Thank you. Hey, we're going to begin, we have a proclamation today for Office Personnel Appreciation Day. Throughout history, office personnel has had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. The office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber that have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive a quality education. To honor the office personnel of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Paul Farfalia, President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare April 26, 2023 as Office Personnel Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Can I get a motion? Motion from Mr. Crabtree, sec from Ms. Marizio, a discussion. All in favor? Pose. Thank you. That is declared.
Do we have anybody here?
Do we have anyone here from office person? Okay. And we won't be handing out this certificate and we'll get that to Mrs. Herrera.
Do we have one?
Oh. Oh.
We do. You gotta, you gotta come forward and, and on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to thank you for all of your hard work and thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Because everybody knows the district comes to a grinding halt without office personnel, so, thank you. Okay, we have math con student recognition. So, Mr., there he is, Mr. Schultz.
Bring you this mic, Mr. Schultz. And before Mr. Schultz gets started, I just want to say, on behalf of the district, this is the best part of my day. Seeing the best and brightest students here up front being recognized really is something that we love to do at our board meetings. And I'm thankful that the parents and the students are here to celebrate this and you, you did all the hard work, so we want to make sure we recognize that. And I'm going to pass the torch to Mr. Schultz.
That's great. Um, so, uh, for those of you that don't know, parents, you probably already do know, um, over the last, uh, about three to four months, uh, these students had the opportunity to, uh, really work very, very hard on some pretty high-level math problems. And then, uh, culminating in, uh, a national math competition. That national math competition, um, eventually has a second round as well. Uh, and we believe that maybe next year we'll even have some people, uh, moving on to that second round. But what we wanted to do today was recognize the top ten, um, and ties, that's why there's more than ten of us, uh, for, uh, math students. And, uh, this is, we had approximately a hundred and ten students all in fourth grade come to the junior high and, uh, take this national math competition. They did extremely well. Um, our top three that all, uh, when I say the names, I'll say the last three, uh, for the end. Those three, uh, achieved in the ninetieth percentile. All of the students in front of you achieved at the eighty-fifth percentile or, or above on a national math competition. So you're not just talking about the, the normal level students, we're talking about the highest level students in the nation, all at the eighty-fifth percentile or above. So, uh, you should be really, parents, you should be really proud of your students. And, and students, you should be very proud of yourself as well. Uh, as I told you guys, uh, when you took this, remember you have one job. When you go to fifth grade, you have to tap your fifth-grade teachers and say, hey, we did this really cool math competition. I want to do it again next year. Sound good? Okay, that's your, that's your homework. Um, I, I, before I, uh, say the students' names, I want to, uh, make sure that I recognize, uh, the teachers and the retired teacher that helped make this happen. And some of those teachers are here. Um, Ms. Gwynn from Cicero is here. Ms., Ms. Johnson's from Roxboro Road Middle is here, or, uh, Elementary is here. Um, we also have, uh, Ms. Buetti, who was at Allen Road, Mr. Marzullo, who was at Smith Road. Ms. Andrews at, uh, KWS Bear Road and Ms. Alexander at Lakeshore, uh, as well as retired teacher Claudia Hertzberg, who helped, um, make sure that this happened. So I just wanted to give a round of applause to them as well because they really did it. Okay, so let's start. Um, I'm gonna, uh, call a, a student's name. You can, uh, handshake the, the two really important people here. Uh, Mr. Bulls and Mr. Farfalia, um, but then we will, uh, you can go ahead and go sit back down. Uh, parents, go ahead, feel free to come up and take that quick picture. But as a group, we're gonna go into the hallway and take a group picture, so we won't take the group picture in here. Sound good? Okay, cool. Um, so let's start with Liliana Vargas from Allen Road Elementary. Congratulations, Liliana. Bradley Tilden from Roxboro Road Elementary. Henry Stockholm from KWS Bear Road Elementary. Liam Geiger from Cicero Elementary. Aaron Walker from Cicero Road Elementary. Savannah Budlong from Smith Road Elementary. Ben Lindstruth from Cicero Elementary. Noah Fitten from Cicero Road Elementary. Vanessa Baker from Roxboro Road Elementary. And Robert Clark from Roxboro Road Elementary. Before I announce the final three, uh, one thing that I thought was really great, uh, is although we, um, five of the six elementary schools are represented here, and, um, at some point I had to cut it off. I couldn't make, this room is kind of exploding right now. Um, but, uh, the very next, um, couple of students were from that sixth, uh, elementary. So it's pretty amazing that we have six elementary schools that are all represented in these top ten students. It's, it's pretty awesome. But, uh, let's go ahead and recognize Piper Sloan. Piper was in the ninetieth percentile, uh, in the nation. Elliot Weikman in the ninety-first percentile. And Damian O'Toole in the ninety-first percentile. And that is it. Congratulations, guys. Uh, you should be really, really proud of yourselves. Um, and they're gonna do a bunch of really important stuff, so, uh, after maybe Mr. Farfalia or Mr. Bull says something, uh, we can kind of step out. So you don't have to stay the whole time.
Again, this is probably the most excitement that we've had at our board meeting in a long time. And it's, uh, the, uh, the energy is wonderful. Again, the students here are going to be with us for quite some time, and they're gonna do great things. And we're gonna be seeing more of you. I have, uh, the full confidence in that. And I just want to thank the parents for also helping us out as well as Mr. Schultz. Because he was the one that initially started this going, and we want to make sure that we do more of these things. So, uh, be ready at the middle school because we have, uh, more to come, uh, as far as these kind of competitions. So thank you again, everyone, for being here.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yep. Okay, it's, uh, next we have the CNS High School Career Center overview, so you can get set up. And when you're ready, soon as everything clears out, you can take it from here.
Would, would you like the, would you like the handheld? Okay.
Okay.
YouTube.
Great. Thank you, great. Uh. Yes, I, I believe so. Okay. Alright, um, so thank you so much for, um, allowing me to come here and, and speak to you about the wonderful things that are happening in the Career Center. Let's see. Okay, so, uh, my name is Erin Dever, and I'm the Career Education Coordinator for, um, CNS High School. One of the things that I have, uh, that is a link to our Career Center website, um, that is located on the CNS website. Um, I do update that. I'm the only person that, uh, takes care of that website. So if you do go to it, um, be patient, it's a work in progress, so I'm gonna get some help with that, uh, next month on our, uh, half-day. Um, one of the things that I, I pride myself in is we do an annual college and trades fair, uh, in every October. Um, this past year, we had seventy-three colleges and universities attend, not all from New York State. We had a handful of out-of-state schools that come, and nine trades areas were represented. We had a wonderful turnout. It was at least three fifty attended. It was, it was amazing. It really went off with a hit, without a hitch. Um, and I had a lot of wonderful support from our administration and from our, uh, school counselors as well. A lot of people pitching in. Um, also that same night, the counseling office puts on their financial aid fact night presentation in the auditorium. And we had over two hundred and fifty parents and students attend that, which is really phenomenal. Uh, college visits are scheduled, uh, throughout the year from September through April, sometimes in May. Um, they, uh, come to the Career Center. We have two time slots that are used, um, for them. And I've had sixty colleges plus, actually have another one, it's, the numbers have changed a little bit. Um, because I've had some more colleges sign up for visits this next week and the week after. I've also had, uh, instant admit days, which is kind of new to what, uh, what we do in the Career Center with colleges. Um, we had, uh, let's see, I think it was SUNY Brockport, Niagara University, and Anadogah Community College will come in. And, uh, during lunches and students can bring a copy of their transcript and come down. And if they haven't applied, they can apply right there, and within ten, fifteen minutes, they'll know whether or not they will be accepted. Um, some, most students, uh, it happens right away. Some have to get, the admissions rep has to get a little more information. But we've, uh, we're seeing more and more in this now. Also, we have, the colleges will come back for a, um, student, uh, acceptance luncheon. We had, um, two schools do that this year. Uh, they come back and they bring pizza for all of the accepted students, whether they decided to go to that school or not. But it's nice, the kids can come down during their lunchtimes and enjoy some pizza and cookies and snacks and things like that and talk to the admissions rep. Also, military recruiting, um, and ROTC presentations. I have every branch of the military coming in on a regular basis. Um, we have a wonderful, uh, presence of, of that and a great support system. They come in during lunches and I put them right down in a, we have a student center in Cafeteria One that they're able to stand behind a, a tall, um, countertop and talk to students. They bring, um, some of them will bring interactive activities to do with the students to get them involved. Uh, it's, it's really nice, and I've even had the Coast Guard come in as well. So I'm excited about that. And we've had ROTC presentations to our juniors. A few teachers have taken advantage of that to let their juniors know, because now is the time they have to start that whole process for, by the end of their senior year. Uh, career exploration is one of the main things that I do in the Career Center. I have the ASVAB Career Exploration Assessment Program. Um, that is the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. And yes, it is the military test that new recruits have to take for the military. However, I don't use it for that. It is one of the better career exploration tools that's out there. A lot of things that, one thing, or one thing that the, um, people don't know is that the military is very, uh, pro-education. So I use their program all the time. They're wonderful. They come in anytime I want them to come in. Normally, I only offer it in October, in March, but we had such, um, an interest that I ended up offering it, um, in December and January as well. So we're starting to get back up to the pre-pandemic numbers of students taking them. It is a whole program where they sit for the assessment, and then about a week or so later, they come back for a score interpretation workshop where they get on their computer. Um, they get to use all their resources for no charge for a couple of years. It helps with career exploration. Um, and then I follow up with them along with their school counselor throughout their years at CNS to hopefully help them, uh, solidify some kind of plan for after high school. So whether it be job shadow or, um, you know, they could take certain courses that we offer at the high school. So, and no one's information is released to any military branch whatsoever. I am a military mom, but I'm very protective of my CNS students. So that does not happen on my watch. So, so far, in the last twelve years, not one has happened, so that's good. A job shadow program is where students tell me what they would like to do, maybe for a career. And I do my best to, um, reach out to the local, uh, businesses and organizations and set up a one-time, one-day event for them. Sometimes it's a half-day, sometimes it's a full day. Most of these happen during the school day, but, um, the students plan ahead. I've done forty shadows so far this year. The number is growing again. We are getting back to pre-pandemic, uh, pandemic numbers. Um, I think, I think I was doing upwards of eighty to ninety a school year, so I'm really pushing to get those numbers back. Um, twenty local businesses, we have several, uh, businesses that will do more than one, like Upstate. Um, I think it's done almost, I think, ten this year for me. Upstate, different areas, uh, Upstate Hus, uh, um, Upstate University. The new one for this year, National Baseball Hall of Fame, actually, our student went today, and he wanted to shadow an archivist. So I'm like, okay, sure. So I, it was pretty awesome, so I can't wait to hear how it went today. Uh, North Syracuse, of course, is so supportive. The other teachers and the other buildings are really supportive of, of kids. I've had a lot of students interested in, um, education. And there's a lot of other, American High, I finally got it in to American High. That is our Syracuse Studios. You know, the, the production company that makes the movies. So I befriended the, uh, the producer there, so I'm, got the connections. Um, I also do a lot of one-on-one student counseling appointments with students. I'm actually up over a hundred now. Um, they include kids that come to me, I don't know what I'm gonna do, I don't know what I'm do. Or parents will call me and say, will you please call my son down, because he doesn't seem to find you. Um, and a lot of them have to do with the ASVAB program as well. So I'm doing a lot of, um, a lot of one-on-one, which is really nice. And this is something that's actually come out of the pandemic, where I wasn't doing as many appointments like that before. And now it seems to be really growing, so I'm glad. Uh, scholarship opportunities, we have North Syracuse Dollars for Scholars. Um, I joined the committee, uh, this year to help out. Um, I also do classroom presentations about scholarships, um, on top of that as well. SCORE is, has replaced NAVION, so we just went to that this year, so I help students with that. Um, we're still learning it, but this is where the, the colleges are able to schedule college visits through that. Students are able to see the schedule, sign up for visits. They also keep track of college applications, and they're, they have access to their, uh, huge database of information on colleges and universities across the country and across the world. Volunteering and community events, I, I keep track of that. I've had a lot of people start to really reach out to me and ask for, uh, student volunteers or getting the word out about, uh, part-time and full-time employment. Um, as I talk to employers, potential employers, or people who are looking for volunteers, you know, I say to them, if you talk to other business owners or whatever, you know, we have a high school here of almost two thousand kids, two thousand potential employees. So that's really, really starting to come in, and places that are looking for, uh, high school seniors that might be not going on to a four-year college or going away, or maybe going to school part-time or going to OCC. They have full-time employment opportunities available for them. So I keep track of that as well. And these are just some examples of, uh, some places that are, have asked me, they, each year, it, it grows, the list grows. Workforce preparation, um, I collaborate with teachers and also one-on-one with students. We do career exploration as a class, uh, cover letter, resume, interviewing, social media, presence and addiction, like screen time addiction, uh, Career Center interim services, filing a tax return. Basically, if a teacher emails me and says, hey, Erin, can you do, you know, something with my class along that? I am a business teacher, so I have that background as well. So whatever comes down the pike, I usually am able to accommodate. Educational field trips and collaborations, um, usually go to OCC once or twice a year with students. We went to their open house in the fall. I teamed up with, excuse me, our music department, and we did music student for a day. That was great. Uh, next week is the Skilled Trades and Manufacturing Fair at West Tennessee High School. I'm taking students there. Uh, Brian and Stratton, because, uh, they invite us a lot of times to come because of their programs are really growing. And they've started to, you know, they've added athletics and, and housing and all that stuff, so. Collaborations, um, I've been doing health service pan, services panels for a family and consumer science teacher who's teaching health services classes. So we did, uh, a panel on some professions from Upstate. We did a panel on, um, mental health professionals. And the next one is all different areas of nursing. And I'm gonna try and squeeze another one in before the end of the school year, but we'll see. Public Safety Career Day was when I had fire, um, emergency communications, um, law enforcement, all of those types of jobs come in during lunches for students. Um, uh, Career Center Consortium, I belong to, of course, consortium that consists of a handful of other schools that have career education coordinators as well. So that kind of came about just before the pandemic hit, and then we developed virtual career presentations. All kinds of different, so what we do is maybe West Tennessee will organize one, and they'll share the, the Zoom link with everyone else so that we can have our kids join in as well. Um, Chase Design, we, uh, did a partnership with them. They actually have done some job shadows for me. So I'm very happy. Northside Collision has been busting down my door because they have an apprenticeship program, so, um, I've been working with them. I am putting together right now a career job expo, um, coming up May twenty-fourth, um, to, uh, help students with maybe possible careers, but summer employment. And also, a lot of places have been reaching out to me that are currently hiring. So, uh, special needs students, I have a, a great relationship with, uh, Special Ed teacher Karen Hurry with her classes. Um, they think we're partying, but we're really working on motor skills and, uh, social skills and things like that with the activities they do. I have to say, they love coming to Mrs. Dever's room, so that's pretty awesome. Um, athletics, I help the athletic department out with, um, the football recruiters that come in and, uh, speak to, they're, they're looking at, uh, the seniors, and then they come in again in the winter for the juniors. So I figure, I have a nice space in the Career Center, so I help them coordinate that as well. And I'm hoping we're gonna get on board with Micron at some point, so I'm wait, heading for, waiting for that. So that was a lot of information. I have no idea if I've exceeded my timeframe. Um, thank you so much, and does anyone have any questions for me?
Questions, comments? No?
And I think I know the answer, uh, Erin, is that in October, I'm pretty sure OCMBOSIS is included in that trades fair. Is that true? The college fair that people from, for adult education come in and?
Oh, yeah, the college and trade fair, absolutely, yep.
I was pretty sure.
OCMBOSIS was there.
Because, um, and I, I, you work with John Rice too, as the CTE coordinator too?
I do, yes.
Okay, because, um, you know, that's why I'm at BOCSIS, is because of all the different job opportunities that we are now offering, including EMR, um, and, uh, fire safety and engineering and so forth.
Yes, I just, yeah, I actually just got a, an email about that, so, wonderful. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No?
I just want to say thank you for the update. Um, it's important that we get the message out, um, as far as what the Career Center has to offer. And I'm glad that, uh, you were able to provide that for us. Um, I'm hearing more and more students talk about different careers that they're interested in, and I don't know if anyone has talked to you, but I've heard of a few about cybersecurity. And, um, there are some programs out there, and there is a, a, a big need, so, uh, probably more to follow with that.
Okay, yeah, I know, um, OCC has, has a program.
OCC, and I think Utica College also has a, Utica University, I think now, to change that name.
Right, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we're at the public con, comment section of the meeting, and I know we have some speakers signed up today. So we'll go through that in a moment. Uh, just want to remind speakers that, uh, the board is interested in hearing your comments. So we do set aside this time. What we do is we allot three minutes per speaker. The board clerk will have a timer going, so please move along and be cognizant of that when you hear the timer. If you're still talking, please wrap it up. And as always, just if you want to either forward or leave written comments to the board clerk, she will make sure that we all receive those comments. So we will begin, and I have a list in front of me, I believe we have five, so I have Brittany Arnold, if she's here. As soon as you're ready. Nope.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Brittany Arnold, and I'm a mother of a current CNS senior and alumna of the North Syracuse Central School District, having graduated in nineteen ninety-seven. When I made the decision to move back to Syracuse with my daughter, I had to have her in this district. To me, it was the best. I grew up in the music department, was active in all that it entailed. And knowing her love of music, I wanted my daughter to have the same opportunities. For the most part, she has, but this will not be the case for many of the underclassmen coming up behind her with the decimation of this music program. But this will not be the case for many of the underclassmen coming up behind her with the decimation of this music program. It has been told by this Board of Education that absolutely nothing will be changing next year, which is untruthful, and let's just say it, a lie. It is also known that this Board of Education wants the district to become a blue ribbon district. Well, to be a part of a blue ribbon district, that takes equality from all departments. Did the sports department have any changes made to their programs? No. As a matter of fact, the Board of Education added an online sports team, but you're willing to take these specific teachers away from their award-winning students and programs. You're willing to take away the prestige of this department and the sixty-five students who went to NISMA. The twenty-six who went to All County, the seventeen area all-state, and the sixty All County Vocal Jazz. You're willing to tell the community who loves and supports this program and district. That there would be no hosting of All County, no performance for the Board of Education, no Cicero seniors programs, no honor society induction ceremony performers. No performers at graduation, and the list goes on. Are you willing to tell Sharkies that the jazz groups will no longer be performing at their jazz series? No orchestra at the NISMA Ensemble Festival? Or no fall play because our teachers are being asked to vertically align with elementary schools that run on a completely different schedule and do not currently teach the same courses? Which, by the way, is not supposed to happen between teachers. How are our teachers expected to be in ten places at once? How are they expected to have practices and rehearsals after school every day or every other day when our children? When the elementary schools don't let out until three thirty PM? How can you ask our children to find a job that has flexibility for their extracurriculars when us as adults? Often, our jobs don't allow that flexibility. What you're asking of everyone is to bow down and continue to cater to what you, the board, wants. Not what is best for our children. All it would take is to hire a part-time elementary school teacher. Would probably solve a large portion of the issue and to allow our teachers to have the classes filled with the numbers they already have and are growing as we speak. To speak plainly, the bottom dollar you're trying to save doesn't have anything to do with the program itself. It's lining the pockets of people who make the decisions without actually living the life of these students. In order to expect blue ribbon status, you need to own up to the lacking on your end as well. Our children are being told specifically not to sign up for music electives. Then being told without parent's knowledge, it is too late to change your schedules when they find out they can in fact have music in their lineup. The official date to request changes is June first, not March March thirtieth, as our students are being told. The music program has the numbers. Why is this board trying so hard to destroy this distinguished program and the integrity it claims this district has? The music program holds just as many awards and prestige as any other program in this district. To be the best, to be blue ribbon material, you need to hold yourselves to a higher standard and deliver on the values and morals you claim to have. How will you sleep at night knowing that none of you have done your very best for this district or, most importantly, its students?
Thank you.
I apologize for running over.
Let you finish because you were on a roll there. Thank you. Hey, next on list, I have Heather Arnold.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Heather Arnold, and I'm currently a senior at CNS High School. From being in this district since the eighth grade, I have been told that the North Star Nation was based on pride and coming together as a whole. I used to be able to feel safe talking to the adults in this building, but now that's not the case. I and most of my fellow classmates in this district struggle with mental health and at one point felt the need to talk to an adult in the building. Did you know that you have to pay for extra resources just to be heard by someone? Where did this need come from? My senior class suffered the loss of a student last year, and we were all broken by it. There should always be some form of support system that no student should be expected to pay for. The students could easily go to a teacher or another faculty member rather than trust the social workers in the building. At the beginning of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, the school sent out a supposed anonymous mental health test. To be honest about what is going on in the student's mind. We thought we could trust it was anonymous, and in fact, it was not. Parents were called and told their child was suicidal for answering questions honestly, but not anonymously, without us even knowing. By choosing to remove extracurricular activities such as music, vocal jazz, jazz ensemble, bands in Foria and other music activities. You are choosing to worsen the mental health of your students. You're choosing to tear down the basics of what the North Star Nation lives by. And that is unjust. Music lives through the hearts and souls of all its students, and it shouldn't matter if it is being taught in the classroom or by a professional. Mental health comes in different forms, and you are choosing to remove teachers and a program that encompasses all. By choosing to remove aspects of all of this program, you are choosing to hurt your students, and you are choosing a battle that can make or break this district and its children. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next I have uh Jessica Sawyer. That's how I pronounce it. Is that correct? I hope. So the French, maybe Soulier or? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Soulier. We currently have an eighth grader at the junior high and have already had. One graduate in class of twenty twenty-one. I want to take my time today to shed light for parents, students, and the importance of transparency. And the responsibility of full research. While I appreciate authors' creative writing and encouraging our kids to expand their thoughts into words and ideas, I have some specific concerns. The school had an author by the name of Adi Nazimian. If you look into this author, it will tell you, quote. Um, Abdi or Abdi experienced a lonely childhood as a gay immigrant from Iran. Now a popular author of young adult literature, he has devoted his career to telling stories that turn shame and stigma into a legacy of love. He is known for writing young adult, gay, and lesbian fiction novels, end quote. First, let's be outright what is considered young adult. Again, per a quick search, young adult generally defined as eighteen to twenty-five years old. The average student at the North Syracuse Junior High is thirteen to fourteen years old or a young teen. It doesn't take long in researching this writer that he has written just a small handful of books. Walk in the Closet, The Authentics, Like a Love Story, The Chandler Legacies, Only This Beautiful Moment. It does not take, it also doesn't take long to get online and read some of the author's books. I happen to have chosen Like a Love Story. Again, the summary of the book, set in New York City nineteen eighty-nine at the peak of the AIDS crisis, Like a Love Story follows a trio of teens. As they navigate heart throbs and heartaches alongside the hysteria and activism that arose in the wake of the epidemic. As I began to read this book, I understood and see that he does have valid, even good, real-life events that I'm sure could shed light on specific readers. And ones that share in the struggle. But as I continue to read the book, I realize it's a bit more than the summary shares. Please allow me to read a few of the passages from the book, and I apologize ahead of time. Make sure you lube a condom and that it's compatible. Not all lube is safe. Lubricant for men is needed because we don't get wet down there. I want to kiss every part of you. And when he does, he takes me inside of his mouth, and I'm almost over. I pull him back up when I can't take it anymore, and I do the same to him. I kiss and lick every inch of his body. He enters me again, and it's like we're flying together, soaring. There's many more examples. I stopped there. Now, I'm sure some of you may be as comfortable uncomfortable as I am, maybe some not possibly at all. It's pretty clear that this writing is absolutely adult and borderline pornographic. And that's just some of it. My questions come to, many questions come to mind. Why on earth would the school have this type of writer come to our school? Why would they allow him to give free books to the students? Why were parents not made aware? Why were kids not given any sort of information or background on this writer? What other types of things are our schools hap- uh are happening in our schools and we have no idea about? I'm done in one second.
Okay.
So what we have here is a potentially good writer that is welcome to our school by the administration. And he was not confirmed with, it was confirmed with little to no research. The parents write to transparency and then approval, one-on-one conversations with our teens and the privacies of our own home. Were totally not even considered. The school disregarded that this may make some students uncomfortable, and not every single student is comfortable, okay, with this type of material. The, oh, they hear worse in the hallways, most kids are doing the same thing, or they see worse on the internet, does not apply to every kid. And especially with such fragile sub- subjects. Well, that just mean I'm only talking about the lack of transparency and need to thoroughly research each person you have come into the schools that talk to our ki- talk to our kids. I have many other concerns that I will not discuss at this time, and I look forward to that conversation. But my hope is that the school administration learn from this, insert more thorough effort in researching who's coming to our school. And realize the influence they have on our children, while also realizing some teachings and some topics are best either left to be very transparent. To the parents or in some cases, not be teaching at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Here we have Max Haskell.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your time. My name is Max Haskell. I'm a senior at CNS High School, and I'm a passionate member of my chorus class. I'd like to discuss the mistreatment of the music department and the importance of mental health in our district. I joined the chorus my junior year after a long battle with mental health-related issues caused me to learn exclusively from home. Keeping me from my so- keeping me from school my sophomore year and the year prior. Since joining the chorus class, I've been helped by students and teachers with whatever I needed mentally, academically, or emotionally. They are my family, but from what I'm seeing, this wholesome behavior is being discouraged in conjunction with the cutting of funds from the musical department. You seem to shun the idea of students becoming close to their teachers, people they trust, and telling them things they struggle with mentally and emotionally. You've advised teachers to send students on their way to a counselor instead of sitting down and talking about their problems like civil, natural adults. You don't want us to come to the people we trust and interact with on an everyday basis, the people that have seen us at our worst and built us to our best. I have here a survey in progress created by a good friend of mine for super writing on the mental health of students here at CNS. Right now, it only has twenty-eight responses, but I believe that's more than enough to see patterns begin to form. This survey asked a variety of questions like what counselors you've interacted with personally and mental health in general. Here are some questions I'd like to bring attention to today. When asked on average, how many days a week you struggle with mental health related related issues during the school day? Twenty out of twenty-eight responded at least once a week. Of the remaining four said zero and four more said they'd prefer not to answer. As a follow-up question, the survey asked out of these days, on average, how many do you at least consider going to a mental health professional during the school day to talk about your struggles? Fifteen out of twenty-eight, that's a little over half, answered zero, none at all. Those who answered more than zero, we can't say for certain if they went through with talking to a counselor at all, just that they at least considered it. Another question asked if they thought CNS under-advertised the mental health resources available to students. Twenty-five out of twenty-eight respondents answered yes. It's clear that this system doesn't work for everyone. Cutting funding from the music department will leave many students without proper support. Not everyone will want to turn to a counselor they've never met or lack trust in. It's significantly more daunting opening up, opening up to someone whose job it is to listen and to observe you. Than it is to open up to teachers who may have been with you since middle school. Additionally, teachers from the music department will no longer be available to provide support of multiple kinds on some days with this new plan. Many of these things are little, but they certainly add up. Things like not being able available every day. When kids need to get lessons in or even being gone when they could be taking measurements for addresses for concerts. I watched my friend's chorus concert just this weekend, driven to pursue singing in college. And worked their way to becoming a music teacher solely because they were so influenced by their time in CNS's musical department. While students like these still find their passion with a plan like this put in place, cutting funding to the music department could change the trajectory of students' futures here at CNS. Just like math or science, music is just another resource students should be able to practice in a comfortable environment. I simply want what's best for those interested in music and those with nowhere else to go like I was. I don't want to sit by helplessly as I watch the department that gave me my confidence I have today be gutted to save on money. Trust is a powerful thing, everybody, and I trust in you to ultimately leave the thing that made me me untouched. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Have Shaylen Papino? Oh, okay. All right, and as, as I said in the beginning, please, uh. If you'd like to leave what you have in writing or a copy of that to the board clerk at it. Either now or later time, she'll make sure that we all receive a copy of those written comments. Okay, thank you. Board of Education Committee reports, uh, Mr. Thorne Policy.
Thank you. We have uh five policies on tonight's agenda for adoption by the board. And uh. That's pretty much it.
All right. And Mr. Crabtree.
Legislature will be next uh Wednesday, um, May third.
Okay, and we have the uh. Post's report was sent to us. Any comments about that or just?
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments. Um, and thank you again for letting me be your representative at BOSIS. Last uh week you voted, and it was unanimous. Uh, the administrative budget was approved uh by all school districts. Uh, both in Madison, Cortland, and Anadaw County, and the three candidates were unanimously chosen to remain on on uh the board. Um, one thing that's coming up on Thursday, and we have three CNS uh students attending, is the Skills USA competition. Uh, this is where students from all over New York State come to the state fair. It's amazing. They take over every building. Uh, at the state fair, and you'll have in the Center of Progress Building, half of its um. Uh, culinary and the other half is a cosmetology, and you have electricians and. We wish our three CNS uh students the best of luck. One year, we had a student that uh went to the nationals, so we're hoping for that. It's a phenomenal um thing. Um, and I think Dan has heard this program, but we had a presentation. Um, in my seven years on BOSIS was very dramatic. It's the OCMBOSIS Skate Program at Jamesville Elementary. It is phenomenal. It's where a public school under Dr. Peter Smith uh and a principal turned their school. Into, I wish Terry was here, where every child understands why. What a skate child does. They know if a skate child lays on the floor, what to do. They know all the kids in that building by name, and it's phenomenal. Did you see a presentation on this, Dan?
We all did, and what they had the teachers do in the skate program was uh every student in the program. Almost wrote like a resume, a a personal narrative a- about themselves. So if you were to see them. Um, they told of how best to interact with them. If you see me upset, I prefer X, Y, or Z. And it really helps others understand and know who the students were, and it built a nice. Um, I don't even want to say a bridge, uh authentic connection uh with the students. That are in the skate program as well as in the building.
Right.
And uh it was amazing just the bond that was forged uh by all.
Do have two of those programs here. Uh, we have one at Carl W. Siley Bear Road and one at Lakeshore. I'm hoping that we can extend that into our school district.
Bob, they they did do a brief presentation on that at the annual meeting of BOSIS two weeks ago.
Yes.
And I will say just from somebody who works with all of our component districts within district classrooms. That program is by far the most inclusive with their host building, and I really do hope that that we can expand that.
They're going to be going to the New York School Boards Association in October um to do that. That is, um, one last thing is, and I sent it to you today, they're truly looking at uh the regions. So there has been a blue ribbon, I got notes here, a blue ribbon committee. Um, made up of um NICID members, administrators, superintendents. Uh, the superintendent of the rider is involved, uh also a TA from Cortland County. And this was supposed to take two years, but we have a commissioner. We have a board of regents, we have NICID, we have administrators, all working together. And a final decision will probably be made by October. I see them moving away. I'm not saying regents are going away. I don't want to get in trouble. But I think they are understanding that we know students better through portfolios, interviews, going out in the community. She's left. Um, so I'm really looking forward to see where that goes, but it shows where everybody can work together. Together to get something to help students. So that's it for BOSIS.
Yeah, no, that I read that and I was aware. I actually applied for that, but did not get chosen, but. It's uh, yeah, the Blue Ribbon Commission on graduation measures, and uh they're looking at, I hate to use the word authentic assessments because that's. Overused, but uh service learning, not community service, but service learning. And uh basically, are there alternative ways or options that students can use to display their learning? So it's kind of. Uh, really cool. Looking forward to see where that comes from. So thanks for sending that. Superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Um, on this Friday, I had the experience of going to OCC. And watching our. And watching our students present in the seal of biliteracy. Triliteracy and one student quad literacy. Uh, it was absolutely amazing. We had twenty students in total. And, um, we had many of our staff not only, um, act as judges, but also bring students support. The entire program and I want to make sure I, I recognize, um, we had students, uh, perform in French. Spanish, Bosnian, Bulgarian, Tagalog, and I had to look that one up. And that is a, a Filipino language, Girardi and Hindi. Um, it was a feat to, to see. I was able to sit in a few of the presentations and the knowledge and the information that our students were, were able to present. Was extremely impressive and having them up on the OCC campus was also. Uh, another experience for them as well because they were there for quite some time and just feeling like college students. So I, I want to recognize we had many world languages teachers that were involved. And I know Jessica Keen and, and Shada Mannion were, uh, our district coordinators. Uh, Mary Murdoch, Lydia Rodan, Chaperone, the students. Um, Pam Stano, uh, also was coordinating, uh, with OCM, uh, Bosse's. But Elise Brown, Andrea David, Shane Kelson, Ivan Rodriguez, uh, Madeline Perry, Heather Pukta. Kim Rice and Amy St. John were all there in the capacity of the mid-state Auburn team that organized the event. It was outstanding and, um, I just, I, I couldn't be prouder. Um, it was, uh. Unbelievable what our students can do and, uh, it was very, uh, it was a nice Friday afternoon to watch, uh, our best and brightest. Um, on top of that, we had a wonderful festival of the arts. Again, when you talk about the thousands of people that came through the high school and through. But the Cicero, for all those who think traffic in the morning before the high school is bad, um, it was. It was a lot, but it was all good stuff. You had students, grandparents, parents. Walking around, looking at their work and they were just beaming as they, as they walked through the school. Um, and they just, uh, we had presentations. Uh, as far as drum line that was going on in the gym, we had singing that was going on in the auditorium. Um, and also we had some athletic contests that were going on on the field, but it was, uh, uh, a nice unity of the community for the Saturday. Um, I know the Optimist Club was there, uh, working hard and our administrators and board members were present. And again, what we were seeing was some of the best work of all of our students and staff. Working together, uh, for a community event. So again, something more to be proud of. Um, we did have some athletic events going on. I know our lacrosse teams were out on the field that day. And, uh, I think they won, uh, both of their games, but, uh, again, uh, from what you saw here at the board meeting to what you saw this past week. This is why our school district is a great place to be. So, um, the board should be proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Education comments?
Yeah, I have one. Um, as we sprint to the end of the year, we're about to hit, um, basically week after week where we have some sort of concert or award ceremony. Um, the first one, uh, is this Friday, the Junior High School Talent Show will be next door. Uh, it's early this year, uh, and then we have a series of concerts. Uh, CNS will have their talent show at the junior high this year as well at the end of May. And then we get into award season, um, up at the high school for dollars for scholars and, and CNS. So it's going to be a busy month and a half coming up, but just wanted to let people know to, to check their calendars because we have quite a few. Uh, co-curricular events coming up, uh, in rapid succession here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marizio. Anything else? Sure.
The first one is say that they had in the paper Sunday, the athletes. Outstanding four athletes in each area. While we didn't do as well as we did in the fall, but Kate Putnam was on that list again. For track and field, uh, for, uh, indoor track. I'm sure her name is going to be on there. Uh, in the spring and at the end in June, talked to Tim about, I really want to go to this. It was at the junior high last year. These are all the top four athletes in each of the sports and, um. I think it's like the Academy Awards, um, it, it's wonderful. So, um, we should be very proud of that. Um, Saturday. Uh, I, I can't say enough about Saturday, uh, at the high school, seeing the artwork and the music that we have in this school district. Um, I want to thank you, Dan, for being there. Um, and walking around and seeing all the different programs. That means a lot to me and it means a lot to the community. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Leahy. In between the, um, number two and number twenty-two. He was there supporting the program and I, I appreciate that, Chris. I know it's hard to have a, a senior and, and going to those, so events, but you were there. And then I definitely have to thank, um, Don Keegan. He was there the most, the full day greeting people. He has a way of doing it. I, people call me the mayor. I call him the mayor. Um, and, and he was so, uh, supportive of our program and then Donna Marie Norton too. She was there the whole time. Um, uh, doing it. It's just a wonderful program and I'd said to Dan, I'm pretty sure we broke a record. Of, of attendance there because there was just so, so many people. I didn't talk about it under legislature, but I'm going to talk now. Um, we have a, we have, um. A budget vote coming up to the audience, uh, on May six, sixteenth. Um, if you leave tonight, you'll see a beautiful poster that Lori, um, Cook has, uh, has, um, produced. Lori Cook is our, um. Uh, publicity person. She works very, very hard to, um, tell the community what you will be voting on. Um, I spent Saturday passing these out, which talk about all the, the dates. I believe you were at, uh, Carl W. Saly Bear Road today, um, and it tells a, a lot about the budget. Jill knows we want, we have to do, um, over seventeen hundred. Um, because I want, I really would like two thousand voters there. So I'm asking you as board members to, to let the community know what, what is, uh, what we're voting on. And the budget and student representative on, on our board, uh, the buses, transportation. Um, three board candidates, uh, and I'm forgetting something, oh, the library and.
Change of vote.
Changing the voting, uh, to all very important things. So please, if, you know, I sent you something. All you have to do is put on Facebook or whatever. We are supposed to stay away from yes, no, but we can tell them to get to the polls. So I'm hoping you all are going to get out there and work hard.
I have one follow-up, Mr. Crabtree. Thank you for reminding me. I, I did talk about the festival of the arts, but I left out some key people. And you did mention Donna Marie Norton that did a lot of work, but also the art and music teachers. If you, the time that they took to display all the work took hours and hours and they were also there. Um, with their students and with the artwork. I also want to thank the custodians that were there. They were just working like crazy just to keep up with all the things that needed to, uh, be done. The security guards that were working outside. So there were many hands, uh, working non-stop to, to pull this off. So I, I do want to thank, and again, I know Mr. Keegan and Mr. Leahy were, were there. Um, we try to make sure that we are able to be, to be present, um, answer questions, help people out. Um, and just be, be part of the event. So thank you again for being there and, uh, I know other people had been working, but I just wanted to mention that as well.
I'd like to see on, uh, the rest of the art teachers and a list of these teachers. I, I, sorry, I didn't hear that. The one thing that's missing from that program, um, people need to know. Our W. Saly Bear Road, the art music teacher that been part of that. So I think the list.
Other comments? Yay. Then we will. Move to. Routine action items. If I could get a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty-three, motion from Dr. Kramer, sec from Mr. Thorne. Minutes are in front of us. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, those are carried. If I get a motion to place B, C, and D together, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mrs. Gru. These are the classification of disabled students for school, for preschool and for home instruction by the committees of special ed. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, those are carried. And a motion, please, to acknowledge a business officer reports on items E, motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mrs. Gru. Those are in front of us. Questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Thank you. Discussion action items. We have a resolution to enter into multi-year service agreement for telecommunications services. If I get a motion. To place that before us, motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. Okay, that is before us. What I saw here, it's the same service we've had in the past and they, they were the lowest bid. Okay. Any question, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, thank you. That is carried. B, declaration marketable and non-marketable surplus motion placed before us, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne.
I did have a quick question.
Any, any question? Yes, sir.
The, uh, I noticed there's a, a number of, I think, school buses on the marketable. What happens with, uh, I, I assume money is brought in from those transactions if they're sold?
School buses to be, Dan's.
Into general revenue.
General revenue, okay.
So those go to auction. That's how, okay. Other questions? Okay, seeing. Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Thank you. Acknowledgement of a gift. If I get a motion that before us, motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mrs. Gru. That is five thousand dollars from a anonymous donor to support math-related activities. All in favor? Oppose, thank you. That is carried. And item D, the extension of the nineteen to twenty-three contract between North Syracuse and the Scooters, again, the Office Personnel Association. For one year, motion from Mr. Thorne, sec from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Thank you. And E, the approval, the extension of the nineteen twenty-three contract between North Syracuse. And the Maintenance and Operations Association for one year, motion from Dr. Kramer, sec from Mr. Marizio. Question there. Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Thank you. We have the policies now, policies. It's F, that would be F. Excuse me. That's right. Uh, we amend the district calendar pretty much every other board meeting. So I, if you could do a motion. Thank you. Motion from Mr. Marizio to put F before us, a sec from Dr. Kramer. The calendars before us, uh, was I correct? I read it was just like an underlining of regents weeks or highlighting of them? Oh, okay.
June twentieth.
All right.
He did it on the one.
All right. So you probably won't be amending to twenty-two, twenty-three anymore. Okay. Any other qu- questions other than my comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Thank you. And we have, uh, items G through K. There are the policies and Mr. Thorne. Discuss that were brought forward from the policy committee. Would you like to make a motion to put that before us? Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from. Dr. Kramer. So those five policies are before us. All together. If anybody needs one taken out, we can re-amend that motion. Is there any questions or comments about any of those? Okay, if none. And all in favor. Oppose, okay, those policies are carried. Thank you very much. And we have one in retirement to acknowledge. Cynthia Thrasher, a teacher aide who retires at five point six years of service. So we thank her for her service and wish her. A happy and long, healthy retirement. If I get a motion, put instructional personnel report A before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mrs. Gru. A is before us. Any questions? Yes, yes, sir.
I want to thank Jason. This is amazing that we were able to hire three science teachers. Uh, and also I see English because it's going to be very difficult. To get the very best if we wait to after the budget. So John, I know John is very happy. I spoke with him about. His hires and so thank you, Jason, um, for doing that. And I know we got more to go, but thank you.
I was. Those are biggies. They're tough areas. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Thank you very much. And support staff personnel, be a motion placed at before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer. Sec from Mr. Thorne. That is before us. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, that is carried. This time I will make a motion for executive session. I'll answer for a second. The motion is to move in for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations. With the North Syracuse Perdian Professional Association. If I get a second, sec from Mr. Marizio, there'll be no action to follow. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, any motion? To adjourn, please. Motion from Ms. Marizio, sec from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Oppose, we are adjourned. Seven oh six. Thank you very much.